Good. All right, at six thirty, I'm gonna call the Joshua City Council to order one oh one, South Main, Joshua, Texas. This is an open meeting, subject to the open meeting laws of the state of Texas. If you're zoomed into our meeting, there's a way that you can raise a flag and that will notify our city secretary that you would like to speak on one of our agenda items. We do, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We do have a forum present, and at this time, I'm gonna ask Mike Kidd to lead us in the pledge, followed by the invocation from Barbara Crew.
Your ass.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Father God, we come to you and in perfect people in difficult times, struggling lives that go from empty to overfilled and abundantly blessed to completely broken. Help us to live more balanced life with grateful hearts and pause and contemplate the simple things we often say for granted. I ask you now that you bless every life of every person that's here tonight, their families and the individuals they represent, and ask you, Father God, to give us wisdom, knowing that your word tells us that if we ask for wisdom, he will give it to us liberally and without reproach. Help the officials govern intentionally, making good and right decisions, giving strength and resolve, let them not grow weary in doing well, but instead rise to the challenges that will move our town forward and allow us to reap the joys of a city as amazing as its name says. Call us to lean on the hope that was found in the biblical Joshua, as he told his people, sanctify yourselves, for tomorrow, God will do amazing things among us. I ask you, Father, to redeem the time to bless the citizens of Joshua, both present and future, and to wrap your arms around us. Set us apart, true believing the golden rule, and considering others before ourselves, interacting with generosity, friendship, encouraging words, listening ears, and deeds of service. Help us to remember that a general answer turns away anger. Awaken us to your vision, Lord, for our lives and our community. Heal our hearts and forgive our shortcomings, prosper the efforts that are aligned with your word, and lead Joshua to an ever brighter future. We ask that you would raise up leaders and fill us with peace. Give us now our daily bread, and we ask for grace in our soonest life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, work session, review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statement for February twenty twenty-two. Does anybody have any questions on the financial?
On the grants and contributions, what did we give in that pushed that so up so quick?
The money from the Safer Grant.
Thank you. That's it.
Anybody else have any questions on the financial statements?
All right, I do have one quick question here on the police department supplies. What all is encompassing that supplies that we're at eighty-seven percent?
I'm sorry, what? Eighty-seven?
Yeah.
Uniforms, vests for new officers?
Gotcha, okay, so equipment and stuff?
Yes.
Got it, okay. I was just curious what all goes into that one line item, so.
Black cards. Oh, you love them, but they're not.
Anybody else have anything? All right, next, discuss and review the facilities feasibility study regarding City Hall, the Police Department, and Animal Control. Mr. P. Cox?
Well, I'm gonna let the architects from Callahan and Freeman go over this stuff with you. They've got booklets for each of you. We're working on getting a PowerPoint brought in. It's a little slow getting here, but we do have stuff, and they'll go over their findings with you guys and take whatever questions you have. We have, Callahan and Freeman is the firm that we contracted with for these studies. Tonight, you're gonna hear reports on the City Hall Police Department and Animal Control facility, and then next week, we will line out the plan for starting public works and parks and recreation.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're up, sir.
Hi, I'm Frank Callahan. I'm Callahan, Freeman, and just before we start, everyone knows.
Much green.
I'm being a Callahan. I've never had too many greens. We're pleased to be here this evening to talk about that report. I know it's in your packets. We're going to have a hard copy, and we had, I had it on jump drive, but we're full of jump drive capability slots on the computer. So we're just going through it with the books and luckily, I'm going over the page. It makes it easier. There's something we're not gonna go through the whole book. What we thought we'd do is highlight tonight, the reports, what we were asked to do is take a look at the City Hall and the police station and the animal shelter. And take a look at it in several ways. We did an assessment with engineers and just kind of a quick visual assessment of the general conditions of each building. And then, more importantly, the focus would be, if we were to add on to each building to accommodate some of the growth that's hitting the cities when it continue to hit, how might the existing facility be enlarged, renovated, to handle that growth, and how might that work and what would it cost? So the idea is, is that a good idea, or is that not a good idea? And so, we kind of looked at each one, at each facility separately, and drew some architectural engineering type conclusions, and some of the decisions will go into proximity more where y'all want these facilities, in terms of the downtown work there. So that certainly will play into it as well. And so with that, I'm gonna hit just some highlights in the report and start to get it on the screen for those who need to do it. So page, page two of the report is basically your table of contents. On the introduction, when we looked at each facility, on the page three, we looked at the general assessment, and then we measured and drew an existing floor plan, just schematic floor plan, layout of each building, took pictures, did a code review, had a structural engineer, take a look, mechanical electrical engineer assessment. And then we worked with your city staff, with Mike and the staff, on, and the police department and animal shelter, on what expansion needs. You see in the, I guess you were looking at more five to ten year kind of expansion first of all, and so we made a list of what we're doing over here, what would you need to add to the building so you could accommodate the growth and stay in the building for a while if you had enough to. And then we tried to do a quick diagram design on how those new spaces might fit or be added on to each building, and then costs, and then turn that into conclusions on it. So on page, on page four, is, page five is just an overall look at all three buildings, and it's great for context for people like you. And of course, being in close proximity, so just kind of an orientation map. And then we get into the tabs with the City Hall. And the, we're not gonna try to go through all the assessments now, in a general, in a general way, and I think we can see sitting here, this building is kind of a nice building. It's not in bad shape, but it's a residential style building. It's not really an institutional grade building. And so that has some issues with it, particularly if you start doing major additions, you've got energy code, you've got all kinds of code things, sprinkler ordinances, and all kinds of code things that would come in if you did a major expansion to the building. And so the assessment, just kind of takes a quick look at each building, and the council has all these reports in here. We won't try to go into detail at this point, unless I ask specific questions. So the, on page twenty-six in your report, this is the list of the new spaces that the staff identifies that we need in the City Hall, this certain topic being the City Hall. So certainly more offices, the council chamber needs to be expanded, restrooms, larger restrooms, additional restrooms, a larger lobby, and some additional comfort rooms. And again, this is just, I think, five to ten year plan, and so, and then the building expansion per your zoning orders would require forty-six parking spaces if we added these spaces on the, on there. And of course, you don't have forty-six parking spaces at the City Hall. So in page twenty-seven, and again, these are more diagrams than actually designed, but the dark shading being the addition, potential addition. So what we looked at is connecting this building to what I call the annex, which I'll call next door, and creating a new entry between the two buildings with a lobby on page eight, in a new council chamber, little restrooms, and then take this space to have additional offices here, where the council chamber is now. And with that, we pretty much accommodated that list of the future growth. The downside to that, and we're going with what's the pros and cons in a minute, but obviously, there's no parking. And so you would have to have a parking lot across the street. Well, you have a new parking lot across the street. I don't think that's only for City Hall, but it could be. The problem is, it seems to be that until they reroute some of this traffic, you're gonna get run over, you're gonna get run over certain times of day going back and forth. And so there's some hazards, if you did a parking lot and used it across the street, or when we talked about the police station, there are options if the police station went somewhere else, that could be a big parking lot. You know, there's some of those options that we're talking about here in a few minutes. And so, so we did look, and we think you could add on to these buildings, but we looked at the cost on the next page, on page twenty-nine, and we just took basically square foot cost on today's dollar. That's, it's going up quick, as everyone knows, or has heard, we're seeing about twelve percent in a year, inflation one percent a month in the construction industry right now. The contract I've talked to this morning, I had a, got a memo, steel went up twelve percent to that this morning. And so things are happening quick. These are all in today's dollars. So what we did is, we took the site work that's been required to add on to this building, and then the building renovations, so we have some areas that require major renovation, which would be like this area where we had to tear down walls and build new offices and things, and then minor renovation would be carpet, ceilings, lighting, that kind of thing. And so we used a hundred fifty dollars a foot for the major renovation, and fifty dollars a square foot for the minor, and then the new addition for the new construction, three hundred dollars a foot, and that's about the going rate right now. And then we had to add, we've got some roofline issues if we try to add on to the building. We've got a sprinkler system, and that includes the attic with wood brine, energy code updates, and then your air conditioning doesn't meet current code with outside air and that kind of thing. So we tried to, you know, anticipate what kind of cost if we really were gonna come in here and add on to the building like the diagram shows, and that came from a construction point to about two point four million, or two hundred forty dollars a square foot. And the next page, on page thirty, is all the history costs. A, or thirty, you don't ever want to get, it's a pleasure to be like an engineer. And then we've got survey and soil testing, all the things that go with it, the A D, the technology, a generator. And so we end up with an anticipated cost of two point nine million, and that's without buying more land for parking. That doesn't make great progress. So that's what we're at the end of the report, is then compare that to what a new building costs, because that's kind of where we're running. That's the City Hall, the police station starts on the next page, page thirty-one. And again, we had to take kind of assessment, the bottom line is, of course, that building, as y'all know, has been added on to these many times. There's lots of issues. And so it's, it's the renovation, and it'd be like a total redo inside, reconfiguration, if we were to keep that shell and keep that done and try to rework it. So page fifty-two of your study has the space required, just what's needed, an additional conditioning space, and working with staff, the train area too small, the lobby's too small, need more evidence, storage, eight offices, comfort room, workout room, restrooms, showers, laundry room, holding cell, and some additional covered parking for the vehicles. So that's quite, that's quite a bit of addition on the, on the police station. And then there's problems with air conditioning and other things. So we took on page fifty-three and said, okay, and fifty-four, okay, how can we add on to this building? And page fifty-four has a little fourth plan with the standard area being the new space. We get even more diagrammed than the typical fourth plan. But in order to get just right sized spaces and make use of the space, most of the interior walls are getting reconfigured. And, and then this addition that takes place and everything in there, again, what I'm trying to do is decide, hey, what are we spending this building? How could it work? And so on the police station, and on fifty, page fifty-five, we use the same formulas, cost formulas, except there's really no minor renovation. It's all major, because moving walls, there's a leak area. It's just running in the house. And then the store, it just also includes a storage shop building, that's that little attached link to kind of on the back now, and that really means to have air conditioning and be a shop as well as just a storage building. And I've got it, and it's on every one of these reworked roof lines. We didn't try to figure that out. There's lots of roof shapes with the presence of some roof, and when you add on, you have to figure that out, and that costs some money. So we put some money in for foundations and that kind of thing. Energy code updates, air conditioning updates. And so we came to a little over two million for this major addition in renovations, which came to two fifty-six, two hundred fifty-six dollars a square foot, storage building separate at one fifty. And then the next page is, is, and so you ended up with about a two point three million dollar addition. The City Hall, again, I'm sure you can't ever add on a board. You just use up all your land and you need a parking lot. On the police station, this would probably fill it up with the party, but it's the sites being there. You know, it's a much bigger piece of land over there. Okay, and then the animal shelter. It is residential roofline, but all, it's got hard walls. They're all block walls. So it's really more commercial institutional quality in a lot of respects, in terms of the quality of the building, you know, has a residential, you know, wood brine roof on it. And so that, the building is, you know, that's better safe. And then on page, on the animal shelter, the addition, page seventy-three, kind of highlighted the places, additional space needed, and that's more indoor kennels, more outdoor kennels, spare room, loading area, a second loading area, a four kitchen, larger meat and breed area, that's for you adopted ones, additional storerooms, cat quarantines, offices, and then some staff and security personnel. And so page seventy-four has got how that building could be added on to, and all the items on the east side or the right in this picture are outdoor kennel areas that would be expanded. Page seventy-five is, got the vocabulary for it. So we think it could accommodate, it could accommodate a pretty major space, and there's room on the site to bring out for, for it. And so the cost on it, on page seventy-six, we had some square foot costs, and another fifty dollars a square foot because of the hard surfaces and the walls. So the multipliers were a little higher on this. We've included all the outdoor pens that all be covered like they are now, but all new pens, different sizes. And sprinkler system in that area as well, and upgrades, a special filter for the heating air conditioning, the floor parking lot in the backyard, just expanded the front one a little bit. So the cost on this comes to about one point nine million, or three hundred thirty-two dollars a foot, but with the total, with the other costs, the soft cost is two point one. And so that's kind of a feasibility on how you could add on to each of the buildings. There's a question as well, do we want to add on to each of the buildings? So Mr. P. Cox has asked us for certain recommendations on our end, and of course, ours are purely subjective, subjective, and it certainly play into this in terms of proximity. But each of these buildings could be renovated, but we looked at the pros and cons. So page seventy-nine is the City Hall, and we talked about advantages and disadvantages. It kind of make the overall back and forth. One of the advantages, the city already owns the building and the land here at City Hall. You already got it. The building's in well, what we could say, nice, kind of nice carriage, which is very residential or appealing. Expanding the building, the floor plan, we think worked pretty well, that between the two buildings could be kind of a, a nice entry to new lobby and the city council chamber back there. And much of the existing building would have to be touched, other than a basel, a lot of office areas and everything. So those are some of the advantages. The disadvantages of keeping this in City Hall are that it's located on a prime corner of your downtown vision, that y'all did a few years ago with the chief of co-military area. That long range plan had commercial development, of course, continued through this corner. The existing building's residential, pipe construction, instead of institutional. There's a lot of upgrades that the expansion will trigger, energy codes, the insulation, fresh air for the air conditioning, A D A upgrades, a lot of things that are included in the cost estimate. The existing residential rooflines are a little negative challenge to add on, like we showed in that diagram. I'm sure we can figure it out, but it's a challenge. Many things, the site is too small for the required parking, and it wouldn't allow for another addition in five or ten years. So it's, you know, they used to term Band-Aid approach, it's kind of more, more like that. It might hold you for a while. You'd have to accommodate parking off-site, and so the logistics of that on this busy quarter is being pretty, pretty major.
Other issue is this building is not compatible with downtown image, which you need to create at this point in time.
Yeah, you got, just really neat things starting to happen, and we talked a little bit about the image. So there's some buildings, the old federal courthouse downtown Fort Worth, next to the historic courthouse, they got up there painted, and they took a steel modern sixty billion fifty, and they painted it so it's like something like old courthouse. So with paint, we could paint pepper brick and these things here, little tower, and you know, I'm sure with some kind of facelift, we could make it start to tie in, but right now, it's, it doesn't really capture that feel too. So bottom line, a recommendation from us, or kind of concluding thoughts on the City Hall, upgrade and expanding the current City Hall facility would accommodate meeting growth and would result in a facility. However, the site's too small for future additions, and offsite parking lot would be needed for almost all the parking. Because that, that plan actually took a couple spaces away over there, where the city council went. The most obvious place for parking, if you were to expand this building, that would be where the, where the police station is located. If the police station read up on it next chapter. And with all the congestion and traffic, that's just gonna get one more difficult until you, like the road dust, which we don't know when that may happen. And then the city would also want to consider if the site should be used for commercial development as opposed to the City Hall. The cost to paint, it's about three million, like we talked a minute ago, for this building, like this plan in here, an equal sized facility, if you built maybe, probably built a little bigger, but an equal sized facility based on about three hundred a foot per construction and fifty dollars a foot per site work, and then fifty dollars a square foot for the soft cost. So the most part is about four hundred a foot. It would run about four million, this is about ten thousand square feet when you did the addition. So you've got, you're gonna spend three million instead of four million to get a brand new building, and it may not be in the right spot. A new facility would be institutional construction, hold up better over time than from a purely architectural engineering point of view, built better would be, built new would be a better investment. Again, we think one of the main factors that will go with all this for y'all is, do you want the City Hall functions to be part of the downtown development, or much like their downtown planning plan, should all this mean that you continue center, do you have a structure on to the building? And that's what they have on y'all. That's the subjective part. On the police station, likewise, we did a little summary, advantages on page eighty-one, city office building, the size is large enough. The disadvantages, once again, it's on a prime corner for the downtown vision. The building's been added on to many times, it's really outplayed the useful life. It would be part of the major, same major kind of upgrades, even more so than this building. And it would need a new fire protection sprinkler system, and it's gonna be costly, as you saw from the estimate. The, the proposed additions in the report are a major, basically, almost setting the building. We had a real high end house about two years ago, in the area of Fort Worth, and they took the roof off, they expanded it, and took most of the walls out. So there wasn't much left, but there was a big foundation or anything, and you kind of go, why'd you do this? Well, much like the mass we looked at, they saved a little bit, they saved a little. And, but they still had an old foundations and other things. Turned out beautiful, but I think I would start on it. And then the other point that we talked is emergency egress, and I don't know if it affects now, but as the city gets more busier and busier, emergency egress from the building might get more difficult, if you have a call, y'all should have to speak quickly. So our recommendation was, upgrade would require substantial renovation, the building interior would need to be substantially reconfigured. The side is hard to view, it's located again on the prime corner. And traffic in that area is very, very, more and more. And so the cost to expand it, according to the numbers we went over a minute ago, are about two point three million. The new facility of equal size The new facility of equal size would run about three point one, and that's an equal size. The new facility, they institutional construction and all that, but it could be located on maybe a more covered side, saving the downtown portion. So let's see, I've been saving a little money, gutting that building and using it, and what, what do you, I mean, what are you ending up with? Ending up with still part of an old building, just being refurbished, but it can be done. Animal shelter was paid eighty-three. Once again, advantages of renovating, adding on to it, the city already owns it. The existing building has got some new walls, block walls, as institutional pipe construction are a lot of it. And it's well suited for the environment with the animals, but the site is large enough and the current facility is not right in the downtown mix, it's on the other side of the train tracks, of course. So it may be a more suitable spot, doesn't interfere with the vision to downtown. Still going to require upgrades and roof line challenges with, with the, and with the cover kennel area, we, we are recommending a fire protection sprinkler, and we don't protect the, the pets anyway. And I don't know, it's the, I think six thousand square foot of sprinkler ordinance, so I don't know if we were right here, I think we're close to that.
Yeah, it's six.
So our recommendation, upgrade, expand the current animal shelter would accommodate the needs that were identified in the report and result in a functional facility. Current site's large enough and it's located in an area designated for future commercial development. The cost to expand it according to these numbers, which projected is about two point one million, the new facility would run about two point seven. And expanding the current facility seems to be a good value there. Again, it's just a spot where you want it, and I know there's some perspaction on the highway alignment.
Right.
And that kind of thing, that makes way in that decision as well. So we, you know, hopefully this will be useful to kind of give you a point of reference on what to do, there's always a hard decision to say, we got to, we got to go down the road and start with new facility, but often times that's, that's the life that goes along with it. Any questions?
All right, we appreciate your time. I think you did a lot of good work, and you gave us a lot of good information, and we should take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
You bet. But next item is review and discuss the upcoming training opportunities for the police department. Chief Gilsthor.
My time's up yet. I've asked the city managers to consider allowing me to attend a consecutive one of my classes. All the questions, ask the cabinet, leave it Southern Place Institute or some of them a little bit by itself as well. I'm committed, and this is not private, and they're really open to this side. So during my research, a course was being offered by the Southern Place Institute and initially the University of Louisville, which there might be a little contention there, but we're past it, sorry. But they, they have a course that they offer that's called management of a small loan enforcement agency. And that course is designed in geared for smaller agencies. They, they gear it, they're, they're demographic, you know, as far as agencies they're accustomed to. Most of the major construction, they make for major agencies, you know, five hundred thousand and beyond. So this is something that's most subject, we're focused on, see if this size. The curriculum is the same, it just doesn't have a lot of the discussion of other research topics and modules that go into some of these longer courses. The downside, the only downside that I really see is the location, it's not ideal, but it does require out of state visits in Cincinnati, Ohio. I am being intentionally, intentionally procrastinating. We've got this book to be offered in the near future, some of our stuff to be strategic to the city, we've got it partly in the show for a week. But right now, this is it. Again, the, the topic is, is part of their packet there, it's the topics that I can't refer to. Also, the training, trying to all that, you do that exist.
I've got a question, you said at the beginning, it was ten days, unfortunately five days. What are you doing the other five days?
Golf, golf manner, does that not explain it? Golf manner, does that not explain that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm just curious why you brought this to us. I mean, y'all have got, like I said.
I'm fixing to tell you. Historically, any time that training has involved out of state travel, it's come to the council for approval before we authorize it. Doesn't happen very often. Years ago, there was.
Oh, years, because I don't really remember doing one.
Well, it's been about that long, because there was somebody that was sent out of state for a number of weeks for a training program, and people went nuts and were, didn't think that it was worth the investment and so forth. And so there was a lot of flack, and since then, out of state travel has just come to the council. He may or may not go, we just figured, get it out of the way if we get the approval. I don't have any issues with him going, seems like a, a pretty good opportunity. But if, and then if he decides in a few weeks and signs up, then at least we've got this part of it cleared.
I think it looks like a good course, and like I said, I don't think the expense is that much out of land. I think we've got some of them that are here local that the classes are actually quite a bit more than this, so.
Right, right.
Anybody else have any comments?
Buy the ticket.
Yeah.
I don't see anything wrong with it at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with it. It's, it seems like a good opportunity to get some more training, and I, I commend you for looking towards the future in, in your growth.
And if you don't want to have these conversations about, and I say travel, that's fine.
I just, I was curious, because we've never had this come up before, so it doesn't come up very often. That's okay, you know, we can still continue to do that.
I think the last time was ICSC in Las Vegas.
Oh, I went to that. That was before his mayor. All right, next items, discuss and receive an assessment of possible traffic impact during the nine seventeen underpass project. Mr. P. Cox.
We were asked to put together some numbers and what construction might look like for traffic largely traveling to the, the new schools out off on nineteen oh two, and, and a lot of the traffic comes from there. We have some historic traffic counts along nine seventeen and Eddie. We've got counters that are getting ready to go out, so we're going to run those again. And we, we typically do it during the, we kind of watch during the summer. We started counting nine seventeen to see what Chisentown Parkway was going to do. Those numbers have kind of leveled off. But the, the best all-around numbers that, that we got, where we studied for multiple days, were back in two thousand and fifteen. Those numbers are a little higher now, and we'll get some new numbers, and it takes, really takes about ten days for each location to get a good ten-day count. And so we'll have that done, where we can present that to you at the next council meeting. But I, there's not going to be any way to start the nine seventeen project and, and work around the school year like we can on Caddo. We're intentionally going to start work on Caddo after school, we can get that done in the summer. Nine seventeen is a two or three-year project, so we're just going to, we're going to have to deal with it. Now, TechStop will help with some of that, with traffic rerouting and so forth, and when we get there. Plus, there's a nineteen, or a nine seventeen expansion. Mayor, I believe I told you a little bit about that this morning during our meetings with TechStop, they told us today that the engineering is almost complete to put a, a left-hand turn lane on nine seventeen from nineteen oh two south to Manson into the city. So there'll be a, a center turn lane all the way down through there for left-hand turns into Mockingbird, left-hand turn on the ten twenty-two gun court, you'll, you'll be able to, to make those turns. That is in preparation for the, for the bypass. And that's kind of the first leg of it, and that is scheduled currently to let, in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three, so that construction will start then, unless it's funded sooner. Right now, the funding is in place for them. If something happens and it comes up sooner, then it could be moved up. It'll be ready engineering-wise, I was probably in the next six months, I think they'll be through. They're, they were, I think you said this morning, ninety percent is where they were, so it should finish it fairly quickly. That is complete TechStop project, there's no expense to the city, it's, it's all state-funded. But the, right now, there's, we're, we're going to recount Caddo while school is still in session, and then if we'll get it, new updated counts on nine seventeen also, and kind of give you an idea. And then we'll look at some options, what are some traffic patterns that will allow us to move traffic, especially school buses are going to be hampered. And, and I've already reached out to the school, and we're going to meet, once we get these numbers and kind of take a look at what options they have to, we'll try and have that all ready for you next month, if that works.
Got a question, if we go with the original option on the underpass, would people not be able to just come straight down Twelfth Street, cross the tracks, then turn left, and then turn right? And there shouldn't be any, since Main Street wouldn't be, or since Fourteenth Street wouldn't be coming straight through, there would be nobody coming from the left, and you could just go right on out on.
Well, it's possible, it just depends on how it, at what point they start digging, because you remember the, the road's going to be sixteen, seventeen feet below Main Street, and plus, they've got to do something with the train track. I'm, I'm not sure how it's all going to lay out, and they couldn't tell me yet. I asked TechStop if, if they had worked on any traffic patterns yet, and they have not. But, so I, I don't know what stages they're going to be in and when, I'm sure it's going to change throughout the whole process, but we're just trying to, I think, get a number on how many cars might be affected throughout the day.
Any, any questions? Well, again, if they're going to be redirecting traffic off of nine seventeen, about the only way to get on the other side would be Avenue F, some of those other small streets there, those, those streets are horrible right now, I, I mean.
Oh, and there could be a temporary roadway put, put in, if they use the Fourteenth Street route and stay on the south side, which is what we're hoping, then they could come in to put a temporary, widen the road, Twelfth Street here, crossing the tracks and kind of make a curves back to nineteen oh two, or I'm sorry, nine seventeen. That, that is something that's possible. And I, I'm not sure how much issue the, the railroad track train is going to be, I don't know if the trains are going to stop, I, I don't know how that's going to work when they dig up underneath that track, I don't know how, I don't know how that's going to lay out, so.
Yeah, my, my main concern is, I, I drive Caddo every now and then to pick my grandson up out on nineteen oh two. And I mean, now the traffic is, is bad enough the way it is, when that starts, people are going to avoid it at all cost. And that means people coming off, off one twenty-one might cut back up nineteen oh two, then come, cut across Caddo. Yeah, so, so I'm scared the traffic volume's going to increase so much on Caddo that we got to get repairs that we've already got in, in motion going. I know Burleson is working on passing a bond to work on their portion of Caddo, and I don't know if the county's got anything in intention on their portion of it, I know all three of us have a portion of that road, but I think we need to try to get ahead of the curve if we can on this, and, and be ready for.
Well, and I think you're right. We met with Burleson's public works and engineering people last week on a matter with Caddo, about changing the name of it. They've got a request from that Bluebird Meadows. And of course, my answer to them was, the part of it's near city, I, I don't particularly matter to me what you call it, through Joshua, Caddo was the original route coming from Caddo that came into Joshua when they moved it from out there. That was something that they didn't know, and I told them there, there, there might be some pushback. Plus, we have the majority of the residents, they only have one resident on their portion of it, all the other homes are in that subdivision. And when you go and tell people that you're changing their address, and they now have to go change your driver's license and their, all their documents and bail and stuff, it, it really, it, it's a problem for them. And I don't, I'm not interested in that headache, quite frankly.
But that's, that street name does have a lot of history.
It does, and, and I think there's going to be some pushback, not only from the city, but from residents out there that are going to want that to, to stay the same. And so it's got several different names now, part of it is Oak, part of it is County Road nine ten, and then part of Caddo, part of it is Santa Fe. But Caddo is the original, original route, and so I, I think there's going to be some pushback. They understand that, they're going to recommend to them that they'll take the nine ten off of it, they're going to recommend to that development that the name stay Caddo. And so, and we, we didn't really talk much about the reconstruction, but I, I am aware of the, the bond proposals that they're going through. Our bids for that street will be opened this month, it's out to bid now, and so we'll have those bids in, you'll be approving those in April, they're doing the twenty-fourth, I believe. And so that'll be on your April agenda to approve that, or, or to decide what direction we're going to go, and that'll be for Caddo and Fourth Street are the first two projects.
Any else have anything? All right, you may have any questions regarding regular session agenda items. All right, next public forum, did we have anybody wanting to speak at a public forum, Alice? All right, next is the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and also to discuss considering possible action on ordinance declaring unopposed candidate for council member place six, elected to office council, canceling the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-two special election, requiring the issuance of a certificate of election to the unopposed candidate and providing an effective date. Entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda or break it apart?
I'll make the motion, we accept as stated.
I'll second it. You got a motion by Merle Reitstein, saying to Robert Fleming to approve the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
All right, next is to discuss considering and take possible action on accepting the fiscal twenty, fiscal year twenty-one annual financial report or audit. Mike?
Mayor, we have Bakhti Patel from the Clifton Larson Allen Firm, who, this is their fifth year with us to be doing the audit, and she is, there she is, and ready to go over this with you guys. You all have a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, and in full transparency, I am at a hotel, I am not in my office today, so hopefully you all can hear me, great. So thank you for the opportunity to present to you today, thank you to the council. I'm going to share my screen, I believe you have the slides with you also, but I'm going to share my screen, and when I do, I don't think I can see the screen, and so I, if you do have any questions, please just interrupt me, I'm happy to answer any as we go through this. Give me one moment, let me share my screen, and then we will get started. Can everyone see the slides that I've presented?
Yes.
Great, well, I will do a quick introduction, I think you all are Chris, used to seeing Chris Knopick here, he is one of our audit principals in our Minnesota office. This year, we did a transition, I took over a lot of our Texas state local clients, so I want to do a quick introduction of myself, my name is Bakhti Patel, it's Mike, that I am the state local principal that oversees our state local practice in Texas, I actually live in Austin. A little bit about my background, I've been serving state local government for twenty years, from the east coast to the west coast, and have been in Texas for the last seven years, serving state local government, and be like yourself. So my, my entire career has been focused on state and local audit and consulting services, so very happy to be here with you today, I'm going to run through my presentation quickly, like I said, please stop me if there's any questions, but there will certainly be time at the end for questions. So this is, these are audit communications, we've wrapped the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one audit for the city. I'm going to go through some of our audit results, some of our required communications, go through sort of the overall financial results that, for this year, and then just sort of the key highlights at the end. So with that, and there, you know, I will, I will caveat, there were some last-minute changes since the packet that you have, not in the final financial statements, but in this presentation, but I'll walk you all through that. So our audit opinion, we do have an unmodified audit opinion, this is the highest level of assurance that we can give. Um, no modifications to our report. It is a clean opinion, for lack of better words, over the financial statement. We did have an internal control finding this year over financial reporting, which we deemed a material weakness. We did identify some material audit adjustments related to the capital assets, um, some accounts payable items and other post employment benefits. Uh, we have discussed those with management and have a plan in place to correct that. Uh, all of the corrections have been made in those financial statements you have in front of you. So all of those are reflected in there. The financials are accurately stated. If they weren't, it would impact our audit opinion, but all of the adjustments have been made. But since they were identified as part of the audit process, we do, um, have that internal control finding. So those have, they're in the communications letter. They're listed out in there. I won't go over all of them in detail, but just some high level items. Uh, from a capital asset standpoint, there was some land still on the city's books that we identified that had been sold. Uh, they were, it was a more significant amount. So we did take that land off of the city's financial statement. And there was also some cutoff issues with accounts payable. We identified some accounts tables that were not accrued at year ends and that should have been more of a timing issue than anything. And then one of the areas that we identified was the other post employment benefits. The city does, uh, administer an other post employment benefits plan with TMRS and that had not been accounted for in those financial statements. Again, we've put all of that in those financial statements this year, so they are accurately stated. The other post employment wasn't material in and of itself, but as we aggregate all of these adjustments together, they did become a material, uh, they did aggregate to material amount. So again, communicated that to management. Uh, we have a plan in place to, to go through and to avoid some of these adjustments in the future. Moving on to some of our required communications that we have. Our overall purpose is to provide an overview of the audit, our overall audit opinion. We didn't have any changes in scope of the audit compared to prior years. Uh, we're still auditing your overall, um, statement of, statement of net position and statement of activities and your fund financial statement. So still the same scope of work that we've had in prior years. Uh, and there was no new accounting standards of policies this year that really impacted, that had a significant impact on the city. Uh, we did have some new GAZB standards. We did look through those. Nothing that would significantly impact those financial statements this year. Uh, we did look at estimates as part of our audit work. We looked at estimates over the depreciable life of your property, plant and equipment, um, uncollectible balance of accounts receivables and the valuation of that net pension asset that's on the, on the financial statements, as well as that OPEB liability that we put on this year. So we do look at that. We look at the assumptions associated with that. We make sure there's no management of bias associated with that. Uh, and all of these were, uh, are accurately stated in those financial statements. And we are comfortable with management's estimates over these amounts. Uh, one of the things I do want to mention for the net pension asset and OPEB liability that is provided to the city from TMRS from the Texas municipal retirement system. One of the things that we look at is we do look at those assumptions used, the discount rates used, some of the mortality tables used, just to make sure we agree with that, even though those are audited financial statements. From the standpoint of, I think my screen might be covering this. I'm going to, I'm going to move that here. My apologies. Uh, from a standpoint of any difficulties, if we have any difficulties performing our audit, if we're, if we're not getting the information we need from management, that is something that we communicate to council. Uh, happy to report, we did not have any difficulties. The management provided all of our documents in a timely manner. They provided responses to all of our questions. And so, um, very easy to work with. So did want to report that, that we were, we were very happy with management's responses and timeliness to our request. We didn't identify any disagreements, uh, conversations and forth to get to our final answer. Apologize. And then no other findings outside that, uh, controlled deficiency that I mentioned to report, no non-compliance. We didn't identify any non-compliance with laws reg. So, um, we have that internal control deficiency, but no other findings to report there. Can everyone still hear me?
Yes.
They're funding you. This was a last minute adjustment here. Uh, it says no material adjustments. Material audit adjustments, but I just went to the last minute.
No, we just lost her.
I'll take care of it. We keep losing you.
She's froze.
Yeah, she's froze. She said she was in a hotel.
Can you hear me now? Am I back up?
Yeah, it's still breaking up a little bit though.
I apologize. Let me see if I can move a little bit here. Uh, if I can get a stronger signal here. Is it better now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, my apologies.
Could you call?
I tried to find the best spot possible here.
Could you call in your phone and talk on your phone and just show the presentation?
I can do that. Let me call in from my phone. It might be easier that way.
What number is it? It's on the agenda. She has it.
You got a phone?
She, it's on the agenda. It, it is, she can dial it through here.
Will that auto automatically mute her computer's microphone?
Yeah, she's got it muted on here. That was Shelley's idea.
Yeah.
Fifteen percent surcharge.
Yeah.
I didn't eat dinner yet.
Those chips that were nice then.
That was bad. I'm supposed to be on a diet.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear. Can you hear me better now?
Much better.
Okay, I, I sincerely apologize for that. It was working until, of course, I had to present. So let me, let me back up a little bit. I, I, I'm not sure where I cut off there, but I, can you see my slides as well?
Okay, if it's a little bit possible, if you could go a little bit slower, be a little bit helpful.
I will do, I apologize. So, so can you see my slides?
Yes.
Great, okay. So, you know, one of the things that we do, uh, communicate is if we had difficulties with management throughout the audit, happy to report no difficulties encountered. We were given all of our requests in a timely manner. We were provided thorough responses to our requests. So no difficulties encountered during performing our audit this year. And we also didn't have any disagreements that we encountered during the audit. All of our conversations are part of our normal conversations, uh, as part of completing the audit. And then no other findings to report outside of the internal control deficiency I mentioned in my previous slide. Uh, those audit adjustments, no other issues, no non-compliance with laws and regs. We do look at several things, but no other, um, findings to report there. And on that, this last section you see here in the other, this was a, a, a last minute change. I think on your material, you'll probably see no material audit adjustments on top. We did have material audit adjustments, as I mentioned on my previous slide. We did have adjustments related to the land that we pulled off of the city's book that was sold this year. And so those, those did, um, aggregate to some significant numbers. So we did have those material audit adjustments. Again, all of them have been recorded and are reflected in those final financial statements. So the financials are accurately stated. We did have two past audit adjustments. And when I say past audit adjustments, those are ones that we feel are, they're not material enough that it doesn't matter if we booked them or not. And I'll, I'll walk you through both of these here on why we're okay with not booking these, but we are required to communicate those to you. So the first one is around the other post employment benefits I mentioned. This is a prior period adjustment. So as I mentioned, this OPEB, the other post employment benefits, it was, should have been actually booked beginning in fiscal eighteen. It had not been. So what we did this year, we essentially booked the entire expense through this year to accurately state that, uh, net position as of nine thirty twenty twenty-one. So we sort of caught up those financial statements, for lack of better words. This adjustment is essentially that prior period impact of it, meaning this should have been a booked in prior year. Forty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty of it should have hit expenses in prior years, but we sort of run it through the current year to get this year correct. We didn't book it in prior year. We'd have to do a restatement for that. And the amount is just not large enough to restate those balances and have a restatement on your financial statements. And so, well, like I said, we ran it to the current year and this is just a past adjustment thing, letting you know that, hey, this should have been in, in previous years. Again, not material. Management agrees it's not material. We as audit firm agree it's not material. The other adjustment we had was a nine thousand five hundred thirty-three dollar entry around, uh, nine forty-one was holding tax payable. This was more of a timing issue. This was recorded. It was, it should have been recorded in September. Um, it was recorded by management October. It was simply a timing issue, so we didn't book it, um, because it was booked in October. So again, it, it sort of clears itself out in October. Not material enough to really, we felt that needed to be, uh, pushed through on those financial statements. So two past adjustments that we did not book on those financial statements. Again, um, the nine thirty twenty twenty-one is materials materially stated. So I'm going to walk through some of the financial highlights, what happened this year at the city, where, where these account balances moved. Um, one of the first items I want to go through, your government wide statements. Now, this is your full accrual separate from what you look at from a budget standpoint. When you look at it from a budget standpoint, you're looking at the budgetary basis. You're really your cash accounting almost. This is a government wide, your full accrual. So in these government wide statements, we have your long-term liabilities. We have your long-term assets in there, whereas those fund statements don't have those in there. So we did see an uptick in cash and cash equivalents. Mostly we saw some increases in your property taxes and sales taxes this year. Obviously, um, a, a, a little bit better economy than we're, we've been seeing in the last few years. So did see an increase there. There was also some ARPA money that the city received that we saw in that cash balance there. So an uptick in that cash balance. Um, you'll see those expenses as that orange line on top. Those have stayed pretty stable since in the last five years, actually. So stable, stable expenses. And that last, uh, line, that green line at the bottom is your expendable net position. And so this is just the different categories of net position on sort of your equity, for lack of better words. How much money is, um, after your liabilities have been taken into account, how much money is left there? So we did see an increase in there. I'll talk about overall net position here a little bit later, but this is just the expendable piece of it. And we did see an increase in that because we did see the increase in the revenues and your expenses are staying pretty stable. So good financial position there. And the next slide, these are your general fund revenues. And this is what you'll see when you look at it from a budget perspective. So this is all in the general fund, obviously your largest fund at the city. You'll see that, um, increases in revenues here, as I mentioned, the very bottom here. This might be a little tough to see, but the very bottom, you'll see your sales and property taxes. We did see an uptick in that revenue. Sales taxes went up from about eight hundred fifty-eight thousand to right over a million. And then an uptick in property taxes from about two point two million to about two point five million. One of the other largest things you'll see in that grants and contributions line, which is about the fourth line down, fourth line down. You'll see in twenty twenty, that was about ninety-six thousand dollars, not much in grant activity the last four years, but you'll see a large increase there in twenty twenty-one. And that really relates that, that, that ARPA money and the cares back money that has been received by the city. And so that's where that, uh, the grants and contributions are recorded. Here the general fund expenditures, as you can see, it's pretty, it stayed pretty proportionate throughout the, at least in the last year here. No, no huge expenses, um, no, they're pretty stable from year to year. They've gone up slightly, but nothing big there. So we did see that increase in revenues. And like I said, expenses have stayed pretty stable year over year. So we're just giving, uh, the city a nice financial position there. This is just kind of a, a comparison slide. The two slides I showed you before was the breakdown of those revenues and expenditures. This slide really just shows you a slide by slide. If you could, you could see here that between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it was, it was, they were pretty proportionate. Um, I think that blue, the blue graph is getting cut off a little bit, but you'll see the numbers at the bottom here. On twenty twenty-one, we saw about six point eight million dollars in general fund revenue. We saw about four point six million dollars in expenditure. So definitely revenues are outpacing expenditures. Again, falling into that fund balance, giving the city a, a good financial position at the end of the year. This is their budget to actual, and this is cut off a little bit, so my apologies on that. You can see the numbers at the bottom there. Um, the budget is the blue bar and the blue column at the bottom. And the actual is the, is the, uh, the brown column there. So we had about five million dollars budgeted revenues this year. That's the city's adopted budget. There was about five million dollars budget revenue. Actual came in at about six point eight million dollars. So definitely a lot more revenue than was initially anticipated and budgeted in that adopted budget. And those financial statements, you'll see a budget to actual schedule. It's sort of towards the back there, uh, where we do show the adopted budget, the amended budget, and then the actuals for the year. And it breaks it down by type of revenues and expenses. But this is just sort of a high level. Again, I think those bars, these bars look like they got cut off on that graph, but you can see the numbers there at the bottom. Um, revenue is definitely, uh, much higher than what was initially budgeted and anticipated. Same graph for general fund expenditures here, our budget versus actual. You'll see it, it stayed pretty, pretty, uh, comparable year over year. And this year there was about four point nine million dollars adopted budget, uh, in general fund expenditures. Um, actual came in at about four point six million dollars. So under that, under that budgeted amount. So expenses came in lower than expected. Again, kind of all feeding into that bottom line of that net position. And this is the unassigned fund balance. And so one thing I do want to note here, it, it does look like it increased a lot. This, this is just the unassigned. So when we talk about fund balance, it's, it's a, it's basically your assets minus your liabilities is your fund, your assets and deferter flows minus your liabilities, deferter outflows. So, uh, this is just one of the categories of the fund balance. Your fund balance is made up of several categories. This is just the unassigned piece. So this can move year over year. One thing I do want to note is that fund balance, overall fund balance increased from about six million to about six and a half million this year. So did see a definite increase in overall fund balance. The unassigned fund balance, meaning this is not restricted for external purposes by any sort of legislation. This is, this did have an increase this year over twenty twenty. The next graph here is your future debt service. We didn't have any new debt this year. Uh, there was some new debt issued subsequent to year end, so this will change, um, for next year. But as you can see, the debt service is, it's decreasing as all the debt is paid down. The principal and interest will decrease as that is paid down. Obviously, if there is new debt entered into or issued as did happen, um, subsequent to nine thirty twenty twenty-one, this will change this graph. But as of nine thirty twenty twenty-one, this is, this, these are the debt, uh, payments happening over the next, um, next few, next, uh, several decades, actually. So this try, this slide changed a little bit too. As I mentioned, we had some last minute changes. So, um, I've updated this slide, so it may look slightly different than what you have in front of you there. So all the funds in the city, they, they have positive fund balances except for that capital improvements fund, which had a, a negative fund balance. The capital improvement funds, obviously the capital projects going there. So that can swing from year to year as that money is put into that, into that fund to pay for those capital projects. Um, it wasn't a, it was about a three hundred twenty-three thousand negative fund balance. So not a huge negative fund balance there. All the other funds had healthy, positive fund balances, meaning you're, you had a healthy net position. It has increased year over year. And then the second, the second piece here, the second two have changed from what you see in front of you. The change in that position, um, I believe you might see four point something in front of you. It was actually two point nine million, mainly because like I said, last minute, we, those, those land sales that we identified, those are pulled off of the financial statement. So the change in that position, meaning what was the, the city's net positions change year over year was two point nine million dollars from FY twenty to fiscal year twenty-one. So, um, an overall growth of two point nine million dollars, for lack of better words. And then the ending that position, um, it is slightly different from what you see in front of you there too. Um, and again, same thing because of that land. So that position still at nine thirty twenty twenty-one, still healthy. It was at fourteen point three million dollars at the end of the year. So overall, definitely a year growth. We definitely saw some capital projects coming into play. We definitely saw, um, revenues increasing some healthy comebacks from the last few years. So that's really just a high overview. Definitely want to, uh, open it up if anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And apologies again for my technical difficulties.
Probably we got through it. Good.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Question from Mike. What is, they shared a chart of versus that unassigned budget. What is that?
It's, it's money that's in the, it's not assigned to any specific debt or it's not budgeted. It's fun, a lot of this fund balance, some of it's type A money, can be used for whatever we need it for. We try to keep a reserve balance for three to six months. So that if all taxes stopped coming in, the city can fund itself for right now about six months. And that's, that's kind of the gold standard is, is you get six months reserves built up. So that if an emergency happens or, you know, something happens with taxes or whatever, you can, you can still operate and fund for a few months.
I've seen a chart like that one. It might have been that before, unless.
Well, there are some things in this one that, that warranted others, but I, I think there was a different set of people versus last year and so.
Well, I used to hear a slush fund type thing or?
No, slush funds are illegal. It's, it's just reserves. It's, it's a savings account of the city. It's money that's in the bank. Yeah, it's, it's, it's there if it's needed. If you need to allocate it for something or spend it, then we would, we would move it over to an allocated item.
Is that part of the grant?
Some of it is. Some of it's ARPA funds. We don't normally carry that much, but it's, there just been, there's bond proceeds. For we sold the street bonds last year there, so there, you know, a lot of that money is accounted for.
Anybody else? All right, do we need?
Like if I could just quick, like if I could just quickly add, would we do, that's the unassigned, would we do restrict it on those financial statements? They, they're required to be externally restricted, meaning there was a tax issued for a certain specific use. And so the city cannot use it for other purposes. Whereas the unassigned, the city can reserve, the council can find different uses for it, but it wouldn't be restricted on those financial statements unless it's externally restricted by material legislation.
All right, I'll consider a motion.
I move we approve.
We got a motion by Scott Kimble, singing about Mike Kidd to approve, accept the fiscal twenty one annual financial report slash audit. Any other questions? All those in favor, motion carries seven zero. All right, next, we're gonna open up a public hearing to amend the twenty eighteen future land use map by changing the future land use designation of commercial office service to low-density residential on West FM nine seventeen from Santa Fe Street to the city limit line. Aaron.
Mayor and Council. Land use plan was last updated in two thousand and eighteen. It's obvious that position must be made. Changing the regulation, this can just change or new conditions arrive, otherwise only would even combine them in detriment to a community and suburban asset. Periodic revision is essential if the ordinance is to establish and maintain the rational land use pattern. There've been recent inquiries from developers about the old apartment land, its residential uses down West Barn Road nine seventeen. And on March seventh of twenty twenty two, the planning and building commission made recommendations to the city council for approval to amend the two thousand and eighteen future land use.
Thank you. Did we have anybody sending anything in, in favor or against?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna close the public hearing at seven forty four. Next, discuss, consider and take possible action on this request to amend the twenty eighteen future land use map by changing the future land use designation of commercial office service to low-density residential. Anybody have any questions?
Define low-density residential.
Bingo.
Low density consists of single-family duplexes, townhomes, patio style homes. When you get into your apartments, that's considered multifamily. So the low-density covers, covers those types.
Duplexes are still considered low-density?
Yes.
Said apartments are low-density?
No, apartments are not.
Okay.
So low-density is pretty much anything they want to build. So what I'm hearing.
Aaron, is this in context with the builder, it's already building out there off of Cato all the way over to nine seventeen?
No, sir. Those are single.
So I got a question. You can answer it, bro. Why would we want to give up commercial property for low-density residential?
Well, I mean. Part of this was, back when we did this in two thousand and eighteen, it was sort of the same problem we had on the other side. Some of these properties that are one tract of land, the front half was commercial and the back half was residential. And it didn't make any sense. You'd have to come in and change the zoning and everything. So now we're changing it where it's all going to be the same. So that particular tract of land will be low-density. It won't be the first two hundred feet commercial because you can't really do that.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to fix. Did I state that right?
Yeah.
I understand that, that explanation, but, but my, my concern is, is we need some kind of commercial to start headed, heading that way. I, I would rather see us lean more towards getting residential going in that direction than, than turn it into low-density housing.
Saying not have residential out that way.
Right. To, to continue to try to, you know, get some kind of commercial on that side of the tracks. Pardon the pun, but on the other side of the tracks. I mean, what, what specifically they're, they're talking about here is just this section of Santa Fe, correct?
Yes.
So it's just from?
From Santa Fe going out to west.
City limits.
Okay, so it's down nine seventeen.
All the way to Nova Chicks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was Nova Chicks. No, no, he's not even.
On the south side.
A lot of that currently is already residential.
All of the distance.
Yeah, sure.
Who's not residentially? Let's, let's cover that.
It's all residential.
That's all. There is no commercial down.
Well, I guess the only place would be going, if you're going out that way on the left before Nova Chicks' house, that's a residence owner there, but that's a pretty good sized acre. That's about the only thing that doesn't currently have residential.
Future land use map that was, was drawn and we, we, in the future land use, we designated that as commercial. And then it was, was it rezoned then?
Yeah, well, just the land use was, but again, you can't have a tract.
If I could explain the, the conference of plan isn't zoning on the property. All the property has existing zoning. The conference of plan, state law provides that zoning has to be in accordance with the conference of plan. So if someone has a residential, a current rezoned residential lot and they want to change the zoning on, on, on it. If, if they want to have a different type of, of residential classification on the property, they, they couldn't do it because the conference plan shows that as, as, for commercial development.
Right.
So they, if they came in and said, I have residential, I want to change to a different type of residential, the answer would be, you can't do that because it doesn't, it doesn't go with the conference of plan. So this would allow then, because, because what, what that does, in, in general, what it does, it creates non-conforming uses of property down the line. They can't change it. They want to do anything, and, and they can't, they can't do it any other type of zoning classification other than some sort of commercial designation. If they don't want to do that, then, then they, it, it, it's a little bit similar to some of the issues we had with some of our historical district or.
Right, on Main Street going down.
We had a bunch of.
Commercial and we had to go change it all back.
Yeah, I remember.
This is to help prevent spot zoning.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it helps, it, it helps people when they, if they want to do a zoning change, that, that land is, is currently residential, zone residential. And so they say, you can't do anything now except if you want to change it to commercial. And they go, I don't want to change it to commercial. Then we'd have to go back and, and basically change the conference plan for a tract of land, which, which ultimately leads us to the allegation of spot zoning. It's kind of a long way to get there, but it recognizes what's on the property, that the amendment recognizes what's on the property now and basically keeping it in a, in a residential, residential designation.
Who else?
My homies.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion the fastest as stated.
Second?
I'll second.
Hey, got a motion by Merle Breitstein, singing about Scott Kimble to approve the change to the two thousand and eighteen future land use map by changing the future land designation of commercial office service to low-density residential on West FM nine seventeen from Santa Fe to the city limit line. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Oh. Which one did you do?
Four.
Okay, motion carries six one. All right, next item is discuss, consider and take possible action on an ordinance adopting budget amendment number one pertaining to the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. Mr. Peacock.
Aaron, one of the things that was asked as we kind of get through the year and making some changes with, since the federal funding has arrived and some of the things that, those things under the final rule that, that can be used and allocated for. We didn't allocate much of that money initially because they weren't through with the final rule, and so now they've got that out. And so there are some amendments in here, some because there were some three eighty agreements with the, in regards to Joshua Station that were not budgeted for. We were not aware, I'll say we, I was not aware that there was tax rebates, a hundred percent tax rebates for Starbucks, both sales and ad valorem tax. And so we've had, we needed to get that money put in here because they've, we've started receiving sales tax off of that property. So that's addressed in here. We also have some adjustments in fuel. You all know fuel costs are going through the roof. The, the police department's been the most heavily hit. They're obviously the ones that are out on the street more than any. We've also had some pretty significant repair bills and some equipment. We're having, we've had some problems replacing some of the equipment that's budgeted for replacement of public works because we can't get them. There's a dump truck specifically that we have to have. And there was a maintenance issue in it that had to be fixed. And so it's, it's thrown some of these lines out, and this is to square those up. I was also asked to find additional funding for some street improvements. And we've been able to, for streets and drainage with some water projects that we're working on, we've been able to free up some funding that can be moved into public works for some additional street repairs. They're doing, we've got quite a bit on the books now that will start in the spring, since it warms up. We've got a contract, private contractor coming in, it's going to chip sell a bunch of streets. And we're going to try to do as many repairs as, as we can do. And so this allocates some additional funding for that. The police department, Chief Gell Thorpe has asked, has also put in a request to add a, there's currently a half-time patrol officer position over there. That position is vacant. That officer is, is in school and wasn't able to continue work with his part-time work. And so we thought this might be a good opportunity to add another full-time position and reinstate an officer into the, the task force that, that we were involved with several years ago. We pulled our officer out of that task force that's made up by local cities in Johnson County that assign officers to it. They do crime scene investigations and really, really do a lot of stuff. We had to pull out of that a few years ago for staffing issues. We seem to have that resolved. And that is a fantastic training ground for people. Those guys come back with just so much more experience. They get to work in a really big variety of, of situations and, and learn a whole lot. And then also, we're going to be presenting now and then, and next year, some more, we're trying to increase to add a administrative sergeant position. That person would take on some, some duties, public relations. And the chief has got some other things outlined for, for that position. We got fuel and vests, uniforms that, that have been increased now that they're full. We've made significant strides in information technology, getting our network system protected, backup systems in place. We've moved to a new Windows platform where everyone has the same version. And we don't have anymore. Some people can't print this because it was done on an older version. And so we, we've had a lot of that. We've discovered a lot of IT issues we didn't know that we had, and so we have been making those corrections. We are in much better shape today than we were six months ago with, with the improvements there and from changing our contractor. And so we're asking to, we've identified some problems. We want to continue in that work to get this complete. There's funding for that. Again, the three eighty agreements. There's, we're working on some issues that would involve some holiday events, Christmas and parades and fireworks and maybe moving from the Fourth of July, looking at some sort of a holiday celebration at Christmas that would include fireworks. And we're kind of working through that, and so we've set some funding there. The public works, again, major repairs on a dump truck that have been completed. The fire department, fuel, there was also a major truck repair there on one of the engines that we've had to have done. And then we're gonna, to do some equipment purchases for the SERC team, for the Community Emergency Response Group. We did not have budgeted parks and rec overtime for the employees there. I'm not sure how we missed that, but we did, and so we've, we've plugged that in. And then there are the remaining salary adjustments that were not made last year. Bringing, there was a few people that needed to be kind of brought back up to levels. We did a little bit last year. We didn't get them all there. Trying not to, to make a big hit, and so this is part of that, bringing that stuff back up to, to more comparable levels. And then I've also put in a, another request, the, the way that the economy is, is, I know you all feel it too and see it. I'm starting, I'm trying to head off any potential employee loss for higher earnings. People around us have made some adjustments and we're, we're still fighting for public works. And last year, we did a, you know, when we use the term bonus, it's called premium incentive pay is what the feds call it. And so I'm asking to y'all to consider funding that, another round of those this year. Total of this stuff that adds up. We also made some adjustments in the revenue of eighty six thousand dollars. The majority of that came from fines and permits and fines, mainly court. Court revenues have gone up significantly. And then there was a donation made, I believe, to the animal shelter of a couple of thousand dollars that put that line item out of whack. And so we've made adjustments for that. So the, the, the net, the difference is four hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. That would leave a remaining balance. I think I've put on you for the next page of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars in available ARPA funding. There's a couple of other things that we looked at doing. If there's more desire to add more into public works and streets, I know that that, that's been on a lot of y'all's mind. For, we can add another hundred and fifty thousand of that, and we can do. And we can do those streets there. And there's actually a few others that we've now gotten prices in on too, which. Would just, it would more than double the number of streets that we've already got on the books. And and that's a big enough. That's enough streets people are going to see it because they're in several parts of the city, big streets, McMillan, all the off streets over there. West Buffalo Trail out off the ten twenty two is in pretty bad shape. There's some work here on nine oh four. Wagon Wheel is one of them that that would also be repaired and done if if you choose to extend it. And then we've also looked at one of the things that those funds are available for are for local businesses that. Do improvements or increase production or frankly, just to re, you know, to help repay maybe money that they've lost. And so type A is considering a facade improvement grant. Where people along one seventy four who make improvements, you, for example, the the nursery that just opened up. That guy has spent a ton of money fixing that building up, putting that business in place. This grant would allow him and other business to apply to the type A board. Present what they have done and then ask for, there would be a matching reimbursement or after they've spent the money and then we would cap it. Depending on, it could be five thousand dollar cap or a ten thousand dollar cap. Just, we're still working through those details and that money would be awarded to them. As kind of incentive for people to dress up their places, make make the city look a little more. Nice as you drive in for from, and it would be for any commercial. Building whether it's on one seventy four or wherever you have it open up. We've talked about it for a while, just never done it. That's one of the things that they've expressed an interest in looking at. And so, and then there's also one of the things I've I've missed over. Nonprofits are also an area where some of this funding can be used. And we thought this might be a good opportunity. The building at the YMCA is, I think. Seven, eight years old now, rather than they they. Came in and made a request for some assistance for this federal money. They they certainly proved up significant reductions in revenue for shutting things down. But my approach has been what I've told them that I was willing to present that that they are okay with is that. I would ask the council to consider some funding to make improvements to that building, to our asset. We've already done some painting over there. We've helped out. We've done some lighting repairs in the parking lot. The sign has slowly been taken down. This would cover that. We'd redo some of the interior stuff, do some things that would keep the money here and would actually protect our investment in the building versus just write a check and send it off before. So there's, and this money actually is already in the budget. This would be just to basically get the approval to make to make some of those changes. So I'm happy to answer any questions. That's kind of it in a nutshell. And this is a, it's not a one size fits all. You can. Choose all of it or none of it. You can choose parts of it and then we will make those adjustments.
How much, I know she said that deal out the other day and I was just looking at on the sales tax. How much about where we at on sales tax over what we had budgeted?
About thirty percent currently. The the sales tax number for the second quarter were actually very good. Typically, we see. A decrease there because you, Christmas is over, the the November, December spending is slowed down. We we saw, we continue to see an increase.
Thirty percent over, aren't we? Didn't we budget about one point two million? So is that about three or four hundred thousand?
We budgeted a million and and it's and right now it's on track to be well above that. What's currently budgeted now, if the project, if they, if it stays like it is. And I don't know that we we budgeted, we figured six percent growth. Right now it's at about ten. There's really not any indication that shows us that's going to slow, of course, depending on what happens with the economy, who knows? If we stay on the track we're on right now, we're going to end up, and we spend every dime that's budgeted, we're looking at a surplus of around four hundred thousand dollars. At the end of the year. And that would still be there. This right here is is mostly the the police positions, a lot of the fire stuff, a- almost all of this is federal ARPA funding. So that that money is, there's almost nine hundred thousand dollars sitting there right now that can be allocated for this use. Or for whatever other use, as long as it fits the criteria.
Okay, so in this hundred and fifty thousand dollars here for public works, you're talking about the additional street projects. So. What exactly are we talking about doing? Cause I mean, we're we're discussing thirteen streets here, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These are chip seal projects. They'll be, potholes will be fixed. There'll be. Some of them, the curbs, along the curbs, if there's a little asphalt over those, that stuff will be stripped off. And then we're we're using now a heavier product than we used before. It's a lot better finish on the road. It's not the little white pebble stuff that floats down as soon as it rains. These, it's a much bigger aggregate. Lays down, the the material that they lay with is a lot thicker, so it sinks back down and it'll extend the life of the roads. And obviously, we can't afford to to repave all of them. Some of these are repaved. There's a lot of repaving on nine oh four. Wagon Wheel, there's some repaving in the curve where we're having a lot of problems and we're going to overlay all of it. A lot of these are just cleaning up some of the streets that are. Pretty heavy traffic and especially McMillan, McMillan's a big wide street. And it would include reselling that, restrapping it. That's that's part of the stuff too. It's just a lot of things that helps us clean up a lot of stuff so that. Four, five years down the road, they're not total rebuilds like like some of what we're facing now.
When we. Buy fuel for our our fire trucks and our our police cars and so on and so forth, are we getting any kind of of contracted discount? On on the gas or or are we just buying it at that current market price?
We've actually just started.
I'm actually looking into a fuel program with God, Fuel Man, right now. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the details because I'm not familiar with them. But usually initially, when you come on with those companies, they'll give you a set price break or discount. Initially, when I was talking with Wex, we could choose an ExxonMobil and we had an ExxonMobil here. But now they've changed the shell. So last week, in my research, I found that seven eleven is actually part of the Wex fuel. So they're trying to give you some information on it. And I believe it's. Initially, like maybe eleven cents per gallon savings for the first couple of months. And after that, it drops down to like maybe five cents. So, I mean. I think it still is a little bit less than what the pump price is, it's a discounted rate, but. Overall, it gives us a little bit more options because usually Wex, it's such a broad program. It's a national program. They can get fuel just about anywhere.
But have have we considered trying to get a contract with somebody that, hey, for the next. Six months, this is what we pay per gallon and it's. It's a contracted amount.
Bigger cities have their own fuel tanks. Some may just have gas and others may have diesel, but.
That's what we're looking at right now.
Doing it ourselves?
ourselves. Fire chief and I are working on some things. I've sent off for some information to bring in our own. Tanks and pumps and just working out how the how that would all work. We've got a couple of areas we can put it. There, we basically build a pad site for them and they come in and set the thing down and anywhere from three hundred to a thousand gallon tanks. It's just a matter of. Getting all that worked out. And once we do that, then we can do a contract for stuff. And I think we're getting to the size now where that that could be significant.
Like with the fire department, with the area that we're covering, you know, we we need to. You know, think, think about everything we can say. Plus, is the ESD compensating us anymore for the increased fuel cost for our fire box?
We're, I don't think we're seeing anything or nothing has been presented. Now, if it's talked, being talked about, I don't know. I'm I'm not aware of any changes that are coming. I can reach out to Tom and find out.
I think it'd be a good idea.
I I think. We're to the size now. We already bring in fuel for the equipment because we buy that diesel fuel cheaper than. But we're not supposed to run it in the street trades mainly for the equipment assets. And we already do that.
Good diesel. On average, because I had Sean run a report the other day, on average per month, I think we spend like fifty seven hundred dollars a month on fuel. I think that's a cumulative of diesel and gas, but on average, it's fifty seven hundred. So it's not as much as I thought it would be. But when you do get into the fuel tanks and stuff like that, just the, yeah, they've got to be inspected. And there's a lot of other. Costs associated with it. So I mean, long term, it would be great to have the.
Yeah, it's it's a process, but it's, and I'm I'm not interested in burying them in the ground and. Building a little gas station. This is something that we would prepare the pad side and they would come in as a containment barrier already with it. We just need to. Hook electricity up to it and.
That that's getting a little bit off the the subject line, you know, but but that's my thought.
We are looking at it and you'll see that in next year's budget. It's something we're going to work on presenting.
And the funds for the YMCA. Do you have a specific list of things that we need to do to our buildings? Okay. Nothing's. Want to say this the right way, but nothing's going to assist the YMCA. It's all for the facility.
All for the facility, yes. This is no programs, no equipment. These are strictly.
We're not repairing their exercise equipment.
Thank you. This will be strictly things that are. On our property, on our building.
Thank you, Mike.
I I just had a comment or or suggestion for the beautification comment that you'd said about some money be possibly going to people. Just a suggestion to maybe come up with a formula that would accommodate. More road frontage or more of a footprint. You know, because like a, like the the property that that you just spoke of, the nursery that went in, he's got such a big footprint. To the road, maybe a little bit of a formula aspect there as opposed to like. You know, the smaller, they're redoing that old daycare to do something there. That's a little bit smaller, but then you go to something that's maybe more. Like the appliance store that just shut down and moved out. It's more of a. Narrow front. You see what I'm saying? Process to, you know, you you were saying capping it at a certain amount. If we have some flexibility there for larger projects or smaller projects.
Yeah, what we're looking at is is based on the size of the business is what we would, what we would do. I mean, there there has to be a limit, obviously. I've got stuff from a couple of different cities on the way they do it. This is a, this is a pretty common bill that helps kind of. Square things up. And it doesn't all have to be landscaping.
Seen it in a lot of, a lot of cities where they go in and they help these businesses so that they, it 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 adds to the uniformity and it adds to. An aesthetics.
That's part of it. We're, you know, landscaping, you know, it would fall under our landscape ordinance and and we would look at that. And if they put. You know, facade improvements, put up a new sign, redid the front, put up some stone. American Steel Carports is redoing a lot of their stuff and they redoing the gate entrances and.
Does this also apply for downtown, for the heritage?
Any, any commercial business could apply for it, yes.
Is it only existing businesses? Is there where we could incentivize new businesses along those quarters?
Absolutely.
So does.
And Molly would love that.
I think that's a good idea.
Type A would also provide funding for this too. There, we're going to look at it as a shared venture.
I think we did it in type A for a good, back twelve years ago, we had this in type.
Yeah, we, we, we've done it before and it it went out okay. Not a whole lot of people took advantage of it, but I've got a cheerleader now. With Molly. And so the, we're sending her out to to companies to see what's going on. She's, you know, taking them a little swag and letting them know that we're here and. And kind of seeing how things are going and and she's, she'll start making them aware of this. Also, we're hopeful that as things, the chamber gets back up and running, this is something they could promote as well. To let the businesses know that this help is available to them, you know, for the asking, basically.
There can be a culture change.
Yes, sir.
If you're not done, go ahead. You know, I'm looking at this report you put out, the chip seal number eight. Anyway, is that number eight street improvements, hundred, hundred thousand for chip seal? It says multiple streets. Is that going to cover wagon wheel and and how many more streets?
Wag, wagon wheel would be in the second, well, the the repair in the the curb, the asphalt repair. Is currently budgeted. The chip seal for wagon wheel would be in the second option unless. We manage to come up with some savings. We're also putting some current, you know, we increased public works. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. And so some of that can go for it too. What I'm looking at initially are the roads that are most traveled.
Well, I didn't see it listed, just wagon.
Well, and it needs it. There's a couple of others that that aren't listed that that we're going to target, but. And and the company says the more, he says he'll chip sell every street in the city if we let him. I mean, he. He's going to move his equipment and we're going to do all these in a matter of days, not months or weeks.
I think that's important. I think we've, you know, been pushing the the street repairs for a long time. And I think it's now, it's time for us to put up and. Start hauling some.
The hard winter of last year really hurt us.
Retire my mouthpiece that I I use when I drive. Nice. Get some shots.
Yeah. See, it shook all your hair off.
That was pretty good. And it's recorded too, so way to go.
Is this a something we need to act on?
Yes, I think we need to give him a deal. So I'll entertain a motion.
So be it.
Has to include the hundred and fifty and the hundred. Everything, all right.
I'll second that.
All right, I got a motion by Merle.
Hold, hold on. I need you to, I need you to include something in your motion. All right, I need y'all to choose option A or B on the compensation.
Well, he's talking about this up here.
They'll love you if you did both, but.
What's the difference between A and B?
Just an increase per person.
On the, on the people.
Okay.
Okay, let me reset it. I'll take option A too. Option B also.
Oh, just one or the other.
What?
This was one amount and then this includes that. Option B already includes option.
Give me.
B include B plus.
Give me option B. What about you?
I'll second that.
All right, so we got a motion by Merle, seconded by Robert to approve. The updates going with option D on the premium compensation and to also include the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for streets. And a hundred thousand dollars for the grant funding on the facades. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Oh, you better. He made the motion and then decided to to vote.
Don't try and slap me.
Seven oh. All right, next items discussed, consider and take possible action on approving the professional services agreement amendment number three with freezing Nichols for general engineering. I can go ahead and take this one. Basically, we had them under contract. I think we've had them for several years, but it is expired. But we need to have an engineer. So what we're going to do is actually amend this to keep them through the end of the year. Then we're going to send out a new RFP. To see if we want to change engineering companies. Did I say that right?
You did.
Do you have any questions on that? All right. Got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Angela Nichols to approve the professional services agreement amendment number three with freezing Nichols for general engineering. Any other discussions? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Next items discussed, consider and take possible action on interlocal agreement with Johnson County Special Utility. Johnson County Special Utility District for water utility facilities relocation and maintenance regarding the Sweet Briar Place wastewater rehab project.
This is an agreement that we've done multiple times before. Usually they're in new developments. Um because that way we know where storm sewers are and. When they go in and put their stuff in, those are already there and so they don't really disrupt anything. Mainly, this is a. Kind of an insurance policy for them that we don't come in and make them move all their lines. When we change our mind about something. This is an area that we just redid. Uh the the in-ground drains there that uh. Right at Edge Hill and Sweet Briar, this is a small street of what a half a dozen houses on it, Scott. It's by you. All that stuff is already in ground. It was just put in this past year through the EPA funding grant. Uh Jay said wants to do some work in there now to improve some of their facilities and so this is a standard agreement like we've done in the past.
We have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Will we approve? Second.
They got a motion by Scott Kimble, seconded by Merle Breitenstein to. Approve an inner local agreement with J S U D for water utility facilities relocation and maintenance regarding the Sweet Briar Place wastewater rehab project. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Staff report. Anybody have any questions on staff report? Once, twice.
Do we have any, uh how's the officer doing that was in the altercation?
He's fully recovered?
Had a sore nugget. Oh flashlight.
Alright, anybody, anything else on executive, I mean, excuse me, on reports? If not, then we're gonna go into executive session at eight twenty two. Uh pursuant to provisions of chapter five five one, subchapter D Texas Government Code to discuss pursuant to paragraph five five one point zero seven one consultation with the city attorney. Regarding legal issues associated with pre-annexation development agreements and related extraterritorial jurisdiction service issues pursuant to chapters forty three and two twelve. Of the Texas Local Government Code and all matters incidents related thereto.